This meeting to order on January thirteenth, twenty twenty five at. At five o'clock. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Thomas. Trustee Calhoun, present. Trustee Dalkelmore, present. Dr. Little, present. Trustee Lopez, present. President Ramos?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Here.
Moving on to item two, one zero one, approval of the third session agenda. Can I have a motion?
Seconded.
It's been moved by Dr. Little and seconded by trustee Dalkelmore. Do we have any discussion? Presteze?
No discussion.
Without any discussion? Can you place your online vote?
So, did you ask each one of us for their discussion?
I'm not, I'm not gonna ask us individually because before, before the pandemic, we just, I just like look at the, like Presteze. Any of you are, are open to speak. Obviously, I just don't want anyone like speaking over anyone else, but it'll save time instead of going to each trustee individually.
You changing the rules? I'm just asking. You changing the rules?
Well, it's.
No, 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 Sonia. I'm talking to the.
It's not, it's not a rule. That was just something that Sonia started during the pandemic.
Was it? I felt the president. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we're, I'm.
No, no, no.
We're just gonna open and have discussion.
I just wanna know. Well, hi, it's calling, yes, calling. Does anybody need a verbal vote?
Yes, I do.
Must you, Lopez? Dr. Little?
Hi.
Nothing in that was yes vote.
Moving on to item three, request to address the board of trustees on possession agenda matters. Do we have any requests?
No, there are none.
Moving on to item three point zero two. Compton CCB Board of Trustees' Future Agenda Items Request. Do we have any future agenda items? Presteze?
No future agenda.
It's, it's gonna come back with later in the agenda, also towards the end, we're gonna be there for future agenda items. Without any, um, current requests, moving on. We reset to close session at five zero two. For reconvening now to open session with six P M. We will be moving to roll call, please.
Trustee Thomas, present. Trustee Calhoun, present. Trustee Dalkelmore, present. Dr. Little, present. Trustee Lopez, present. President Ramos?
Present.
Dr. Curry?
Here.
Moving on to item five, one zero three, trustee allegiance. Uh, trustee Thomas, can we read it? For sure.
Tell me all these things. Tell me all these, so I can have our hearts, please, and thank you, and we can begin. I go to the United States of America, the Republic of Japan, my nation, the God, individual, with the thirteen nations.
Moving on to item six, Report of Action Taken in Close Session Pursuant to Government Code Section Fifty Four Eighty Five Seventeen Twenty Ones. In close session, the board took action to approve our resignation agreement in the district in a permanent classified employee, providing for our designation from employment effective February fourteenth, twenty twenty five, a release of claims and other covenant as specified in the written agreement, a copy of which is available for public inspection upon due course. The roll call vote was as follows, five to zero, no abstentions. Moving on to item seven, Approval of Open Session Agenda. Dr. Curry, do we have any correction or additions to the agenda?
Yeah, we have one, one correction to the agenda. Item thirteen, point one eight, H R personnel items, uh, item one A dot three. Just correct the spelling of the name. It's, it should be Isabel, I S A, E W L D, Saber, S E B R, not Isabel, I S A, L, B E L C. That's on the page.
What, what item?
Item one, A dot three. Thirteen point one eight, item one A dot three.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
Thank you.
It's been moved by. Trustee Lopez and seconded by Dr. Little. Do we have any discussion? Presteze Calhoun?
No discussion.
Uh, trustee Dalkelmore?
No discussion. Discussion.
Can we have the vote? No, we, trustee Thomas?
No discussion. That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item eight, Recognition. Dr. Curry?
Yes, I, uh, we have a recognition and I'm ready for trustee Calhoun to come to the side. Making a walk.
Yes, I am.
So, on behalf of the board trustees for Compton College District, uh, trustee Barbara Calhoun, uh, has served, uh, has served as the board president for the last two years, and so in honor of that, we would like to, for the board trustee, like present you with this nice plaque for your two-year service as the board chair.
You really don't know how glad I am. I am not the president for the third time in a row, but I enjoyed it while I was the president. I thank y'all for y'all's support and believing in me and trusting in me and all that good stuff that come along with their job. But I'd like to make a statement. I came out of retirement. I am no longer retired. I have a job. Now, I, Barbara Jean Calhoun, now work as state senator Laura Richardson as a field rep, and I will be representing Compton, Watts, Willbrook, Ashes, and Rosemont. Gentlemen, know that when you don't see me at the events, it's because I have a job. If I can make the event, I will. But at this point in time, don't look for me for good, though. All right. You wanna take my picture?
Yeah, we can go across to the board, and the board is like, hey, it may be time as well, so thank you for your presence. Board, can we, can we take pictures?
Are my shades dark? I have the trustee.
Trustee Thomas?
I, I'm. That's now. Hello, Becky Jane.
How you doing?
Good, yourself, sir?
You remind me of Artis and, like, you know, this time, the pain is, oh, I really am, there you go.
No, I didn't. Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yeah, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you trustee Calhoun for your excellent service as the board president.
Moving on to item nine, Request to Address the Board of Trustees' on Agenda and Non-Agenda Matters. Nine point zero one, Request to Address the Board of Trustees' Open Session Agenda Matters.
Yes, we got the last.
Good evening, everyone. Trustee Ward, um, obviously, congratulations and Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, congratulations to Barbara Calhoun and trustee Lopez and, uh, President Ramos. Uh, one picture, get that right. Thank you, everyone. Just wanted to give an update. Uh, we have the full naming of the library, Emily D. Clark Holyfield. It was installed, I think, I remember correctly, uh, December sixth. We are scheduled for February third to present the Compton College Foundation with three thousand dollars, the scholarship for students. A thousand dollars each student. Um, it is to cover a year of education here at Compton College. We hope that this is the first step to an annual scholarship that will be presented to students every year in honor of Women's History Month and in honor of Miss Pyramid, Miss Holyfields. Um, I want the board to know that they should expect a letter from myself to Dr. Curry requesting that there be naming outside of the building. Um, presently, there's no signage designating that structure at all. So, we have signage for Instructional Building One, Instructional Building Two, so the Human Services, but there's actually no signage at all for the library. Um, so what I'm also requesting is I'd like to be put on the agenda for discussion. Um, in the last three years that we've talked about this issue, I've spoken for the board for less than thirty minutes, and I think it's important to give the board time to ask me questions rather than other committees speaking on my behalf or the family behalf, so that we have a clear understanding of exactly what I'm requesting. And I say this because there is some concerns as to what type of outside naming that we're looking to, to install. Again, this will be of no cost to the college, but I just want the board to know, we're not looking at, I think, we're not trying to exercise some type of an ego or anything like that. We simply just wanna restore things the way it was prior to the building before it was constructed. And so we wanted to look service to the college. Um, so we're looking for a marky. The marky will serve a dual purpose. It will signify the naming of the building and we be our goal to the library, but it also provide signage information that might be useful to the students as they're passing by the building. For example, if the school is open or closed, uh, any event, sporting events that might be, you know, any club event, student event. I mean, it would be off the player of the college for use. Um, so I hope that's something that, uh, we can talk about further. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Gerald Pickens?
I would also like to congratulate everybody on your campaign, continuing to work in Compton College, graduating to the president. I'm here because a few years ago, that was a, a, a facility put up, the music academy. Uh, I got a chance to meet the owner of the angel, who looked at me at his friend. Bob Daley gave me, not me, but gave my program, three thousand dollars, and I was able to take thirty-seven years to see out of Washington on the Amtrak, something that I've never been out of Compton before in my life. It's, it's an honor for the academy being here. The only, only problem I have is not enough Compton people, and I'm not bringing the academy, but enough of us leaders aren't directing our kids to go over to Compton College. And I think it's a great opportunity because in other neighborhoods, what they're doing over at Compton College, I can't stand for it. During my time at Compton College, I got an opportunity to see seven kids get drafted in Major League Baseball. And about twenty ended up going to college, playing baseball. Of which ninety percent did not play baseball, did not like baseball, was not interested in playing baseball. And then I got a kid to play on that field, and I know it's more people that should be getting banged up. And I would be selfish right now. If you ever go over there, look down. You will see my name. It's in the ground, and I was very proud when they, uh, they over there, but, uh, you know, my dear. Most people, when they die, not, not gonna die, but most people, when it, when their name is on something, not down there in here. So, I'm here. I survived cancer, and I will volunteer to do what needs to be done, because more things over at the academy, and I'm sure the academy would welcome them there. And, uh, everyone that has done.
Frank Jamerson?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Frank Jamerson. I'm the pastor of Mount Huguenot Baptist Church on one hundred fifty-first and Central. I have been there for the past twenty-one years. Forty-seven years ago, Gerald Pickens was my baseball coach. You know, Gerald was one of the biggest reasons that he changed my life. Um, I, at my church, we just recently started a, a program foundation called the Sea Giant Compton Community Advancement for Good Activity. And my, my idea is to try to see what I can do to change the gap. I'm a girl there. Both my daughters got scholarships in softball. And so I, um, I have a softball network. I've been having a really hard time trying to get softball with it. It is, it is a high cost. It is a high cost, um, sport, but what I would like to do is try to catch them early enough to give them other options, because they want to play and they want to, but, but fast football, you sort of have to start at like six or seven, eleven, twelve, you think, for the game. And so I've been trying to make inroads, but I've been sort of giving, um, the buck in my head up against some, um, um, some roadblocks and different people. My, my coach from now on needs to meet some different people after he joined my church. So, he joined the church, and, um, so we're, we're committed to bringing softball, year-round softball. We're trying to find a way to give year-round softball, um, and softball training, um, but also trying to help with the community. We have a three-year commitment to give out ten thousand dollars worth of scholarships. And so, um, that's going to be something, um, that, that we're going to do to try to help them, and, and it's gonna be needs-based, merit-based, but just sometimes. Yeah, I'm gonna have the kid that won probation, allowed my academic probation so many times, I thought they changed my name. But seven years later, when I graduated, said you met all these partners. So, we're trying to have a net like that that can help people, and I need some help. Um, my daughters and their coach, they're both pitchers, and, and I have a network of people that I wanna bring into Compton and just start something to, we can look and say, hey, she's homegrown. I had to take my daughters out to, um, to the initial B A, right, and my first daughter, thirty-four, I got her my next, the John, um, young, but my younger daughter, she went to play for the O C backless, and I drove seventy-one miles every day. We shouldn't have to go all the way out there to let our kids, betray our kids now. So, please, if, if, if any way that you can help me or something I can do, let's network and make a difference. Our model is change softball competition, offer rewarding experiences, and we wanna change your life, one girl at a time. God bless you. Thank you so much. I would say amen to this in church. Amen. Thank you.
No more requests.
Moving on to item nine point zero two, Compton CCB Board of Trustees' Future Agenda Items Request. Are there any requests from the board? Without. Trustee Dalkelmore?
Yes, um, regarding, uh, future agenda item requests, I would like to, um, and maybe it can just be included in, um, some of our packet of documents, but the original, um, because I know that, that there's been revisions, um, I would like to see that original lease agreement between Major League Baseball, um, and Compton College.
Are there any other requests from the board?
I would like to say that I would agree with, um, trustee Dalkelmore. I'd like to see that original. No, very first original.
For their.
Between Major League Baseball and Compton College. I know there's been adjustments to it over the time. I'd like to see the original. I like to see the original, and I know there's one up here tonight on the agenda, but I'd like to see the original and compare it to what this one says right here.
And then, and then, uh, something was on or not? Um, in addition, if, if possible, maybe not from Major League Baseball, but from, uh, the, the manager that's over there, somebody a representative with before it comes up for renewal again, um, some type of, uh, presentation, um, on the programs, the number of students that are being served, where they're being served from, that type of information. Into that. Beyond the students, I know that they're, in the past, have had some community engagement. I know that there was an anti-going, um, program where they were hosting either weekly or month, the monthly community baseball games. So, just some updates on that and the process of community leveraging this space.
Are there any other requests? Without any, um, more requests, moving on to item ten, Board of Trustees' Meeting Minutes. Item ten, point zero one, Minutes of the December tenth, uh, twenty twenty-four Board Meeting. Is there a motion?
Calhoun.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Thomas. Do we have any discussion? Without any further discussion, uh, please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to ten point zero two, Minutes of the December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, Board of Trustees' Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Lopez. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please place your online vote.
That's a unanimous yes vote.
Now, moving on to item eleven, Reports from Representatives and Employee Organization, eleven point zero one, Associated Student Government Report, uh, Shanaile S. Sorrell. Moving on to item eleven point zero two, Academic Center Report, Don Moore. Eleven point zero three, CCC F E Certified Employees Report, Dr. David Chavez. Eleven point zero four, CCC F E Classified Employees Report, Amanda McHenry. That concludes item eleven. Moving on to item twelve, Presentation. Dr. Curry?
We have one presentation on the agenda, and I'd like you to see an update on the professor development here at Compton College. We have Dr. Laura Huntley, who is our director of professional development, providing the presentation.
So, Happy New Year and Good Evening, Board Members, for President, President Curry, and everyone here. All right, so we're gonna talk about an update for professional development. One of the themes we'll go over is why PD, the board is overviewing, and then the culture that we create, that connects students and employees here at Compton College, and then some next, next slide. So, as you know, PD is grounded in vision by design, meaning that professional learning and decision here at Compton College, and we do that by creating a culture. Next slide, please. To do this, PD has encountered some growth, some changes over the course of the past five years. As we know, back in twenty nineteen, we started this thing called PD at Compton College. That included hiring myself at the time, known as the PD manager, but since it's transitioned into a big, uh, plethora of, uh, activities and people. So, as you know, we do have PD connections across our campus to ensure that we are communicating with our, uh, class, our professionals, our faculty members, and even our students, as well as our administrators. Also, we do this in phases. So, every year, we look and figure PD in any way that's needed. And so, as we continue to have partnerships with people like or organizations like Achieving the Dream, we ensure that we're enhancing the support services, especially when it comes to data-driven work in the classrooms and outside of the classroom, advancing racial equity amongst all social groups, and then also making sure that professional development is a part of everything that I do here on campus. Next slide, please. To do this, we have a great opportunity for every single person, from the time they start at Compton College throughout their, their time here. And so that can mean they wanna engage and compete by their computers. They have available, we do so twenty-four seven. So, that means all the time. Also, we have leveraged our partnerships. We have ongoing opportunities for employees to engage in conferences, summits, institutes, whether that be on our campus or off-site. We also have the PD calendar, every, on every Friday and every semester. There's some sort of activity at the academy, virtually or in person. And then, last but not least, again, we have implementation, not just here on campus, but throughout the state and nationwide. We have constant professional development opportunities for all employees. Next slide, please. The framework for PD is really housed in what we call data, but the difference with the data collected for professional development, you cannot ask, what are the people? It's what are they learning? And how do we, uh, engage in that work? Well, we do it through collective government. So, what you see on this slide is that we have PD needs surveys, they run on an annual basis during our spring semester. We also do workshop surveys, um, and we do this with intentionality, to make sure that we're prioritizing their needs and understanding of individuals, but also as a collective. So, we have ongoing focus groups even to include our students so that we can hear their voice, and that's how we come to our PD opportunities at Compton College. Next slide, please. Some of the data that you'll see in this presentation is very clear. We asked them some questions, them being the participants. Which professional development activities have you participated in just for fall twenty twenty-four? As we know, companies are small but mighty campuses, and so this is just some of the offerings that were available to all of our employees. So, we see which one was very popular, Title IX Training, and also we know that, uh, we have conferences that's not listed individually, but everyone's doing something as it's part of professional development. Again, it's a culture here at Compton College. Uh, next slide, please. Another question that really stood out to me was to what extent do you feel your knowledge has increased in the following period? This was an important question because we wanna know that the work that we're doing for, for, for PD is actually being affected, not just by the people, but the students. And so some of the things that they were, uh, identifying as important was the job-specific skills for faculty and classified professionals, as well as supporting our student success. So, that can be done in several different ways. One way that we will talk about in, in the next few slides. Next slide, please. So that can be done several different ways, one way that we will talk about in the next few slides, next slide please. Fall twenty twenty four, some of the PD facts that stood out, and the questions that were asked, more importantly was, what's relevance? Are we doing, as they were doing PD, are we doing things that are relevant? Well, data showed that it's all relevant, the respondents feel like the training is relevant to their job on a consistent basis. Also aligned with supporting student success and being innovative. We've kicked off AI training, and we're gonna really dive into that more in twenty twenty five. But we also made sure that we keep the jobs specific, so we have all types of roles around our campus, and we don't leave any of that. So everyone's learning something within the job that they hold, next slide please. So the PD survey also shows some constant themes, students first was primary. And so as you notice, all the work that we're doing is probably for the support of our students, but how do we do that? We provide practical strategies, increasing more effective communication, being inclusive in our practice. Not just in the classroom with the pedagogy, but in the communication with the students outside the classroom. And then also being culturally responsive, because we need to connect with people at a people level, next slide please. A learning culture really requires us to foster a learning culture that starts with students as the center, the core of what we're doing. And with PD, we make sure that our students are a part of everything, so for example, I have ongoing partnerships with. People like Dr. Antonio Rines, to make sure that I'm supporting students' success by providing them with professional development opportunities. By leading leadership training for students, and also connecting with faculty members and classified professionals to be collaborative in that effort. Next slide please. Some of the feeding highlights. So we have teaching and learning enhancement programs for our faculty members that we've been doing after the past several years. We also have leadership and growth opportunities for classified professionals that we do on an annual basis every summer. We also have academy management training opportunities for new and existing managers. We have diversity, equity, and inclusion and acceptability training, it's ongoing, not just for our semester training workshop that we do for the entire campus. But we do special segmentary training, we did one last spring through the NADI organization, and I don't know if you know much about that, but that is the. Black woman that probably here in the Palom Community College, since they actually came to our campus and spoke with our students and our employees. And then last but not least, student bodies, students are included in everything that I do at PD or with PD, and so I'm proud to say that. Employee wellness is something that we do focus on, every month, every employee gets some sort of self-care flyer to help them with maybe meditation. If they need someone to talk to with counseling, or just encouraging them to get up and get out and be active. A lot of employees here at Compton College have engaged in walking our campuses, especially as it continues to be unified, so that's something I'm excited about. And last but not least, the data dialogue. Partnering with Amari Williams, we're able to have ongoing training through Institute of National Diversity, until we're gonna continue that work, that effort, to make sure that we continue to elevate that. And last but not least, our connection with Achieving the Dream. We are scheduled to go to the Dream Conference this, or next month, and we do these things to make sure that we are staying. In the know with what's going on across the nation as it relates to data use and effectiveness and community quality, next slide please. Some of the next steps, so we have continuous on, ongoing training, these are just some of the things that set out to me. One thing that I'm excited about the most is, we have continuous service excellence training, that's customer service training, because we know that people care about how we treat you. I know if I spend my money on my time, I want to be treated a certain way, and so we wanna make sure that all of our students have that experience. How many of you have gone to Norwich, have you gone to that? When you go to Norwich, you know that you have Norwich, you know that Walmart, and so that's what it feels like when you come to Compton College, they want to feel loved, and they want to be appreciated, so we was that here, right? We want to feel really good. And then we talk about accessibility to inclusive technology, it's important that we continue to grow because technology's not gonna stop. And so we do this by making sure that everyone is prepared and informed, and the work will help with our student. And last but not least, best practices for serving LGBTQ plus students, we wanna make sure that we engage in conversation. To elevate the mind, and make sure that everyone's included in the practice, not just by looking through that, but with what they do, next slide. And I'm trying to beat the ten minutes, I hope I did, do you have any questions?
Trustee Calvin.
Uh, I like your, your PowerPoint. On the professional development, is there anything up there that where a professor? Or whoever is teaching a class, and they have a student, more than one student with the same name, that they can tell the difference?
Give me an example, like when.
Okay, okay, huh? What's, what's your name?
Yvonne.
But what if she had the same name as yours, but you have a J. And she didn't have one, and then somebody else had the same name as you?
Yeah.
And all of you are in the same class, taking the same course.
Right.
And the teacher mixes you up, is there anything up there for the profession, what page is that?
That would be the cultural responsive, so when we go back to. Look at one more, sorry, oh, go, yes. So when we talk about being culturally responsive, that can go to with names, right? So for example, if everyone in here has the name Pilar, doesn't mean everyone's the same, right? And I wanna make sure that people are being treated as individuals, so with collective respect. So culturally responsive teaching, we've been doing this training for the past few years, that I know of.
Really?
Yes. It's offered.
Oh, really?
Yes, it's been offered.
Professional development.
Culturally responsiveness.
Culture for staff and faculty.
Yes.
Have been going to that.
Correct, well, it's offered, so what happens with PB, it's not, everything's not mandatory, so they would have to. Self-elect to say, I wanna go to this training.
Okay. So.
But it's available.
But it's available, it's not mandatory, but you would hope that they would go to it.
Yes, and we do have on-demand training meetings, so if they miss the workshop that's happening like on a Friday, with the speaker or lecturer, they can go online and see a training session webinar.
And, and even if they don't do it, shouldn't they know their students, that they understand them?
I would like, uh, yeah, exactly, okay.
I'm just, I'm just wanting to know what page it is, because I'm going to refer to that, the page that I think. Page ten.
We threatened the word, you want always offering the chain.
Page ten, and it's called cultural what?
Cultural responsive.
Okay, I see it. Thank you so much, I need, I need to use that, I appreciate that answer.
Do you have any questions?
Um, again, thank you, Ms. Pilar, and also, thank you for including, I saw you put veterans in there. I remember from like last time, I wanna give a shout out to that, thank you so much. Um, but what I, what I wanted to ask. Is with going on. Slide number eight, right, so the support, supporting, well, I'm sorry, we start at number seven. And it kinda comes, it kinda goes into the survey of where. The student success. In the survey results. It was, I don't know the exact number, but it's the larger blue one on the bottom. Right, so is that, so does that large blue, does that represent the thirty-nine percent of the student success?
So are we looking at, what, what, are, what's, where do we?
So the six, the five or six?
The five or six, so.
So if you go, if you go to slide number eight.
Uh-huh, number eight, uh-huh.
The large blue.
Yes.
Which has exceptional. Support student success.
Yes.
What is the number, what is, what is the, yeah.
I would have to give that.
Okay, so I would, so I would say, maybe like for spring.
Yeah.
Because I think it will be helpful to me, if it was show. Let me say, I'm just gonna read to you what I wrote down, and I'm really talking about the implementation, right? So to be fair, of the responses. And the percentages, it would help if, if, if I could see. The number of opportunities that faculty had, say, to participate in Title IX.
Oh.
Where they have the upper, you know, where there are multiple. Say workshop or conferences that someone had to go to, or was it just one?
Okay, so I'll give you an example, if we go back to slide.
It's number seven?
No, yes, number seven, so those are each of the specific opportunities, that's just some of them, right? So for example, Title IX Training is offered once a semester, because there's so many other subject matters that I have covered within that time. But there's over forty-five opportunities for faculty, according to professional, senior, professional development. The cool thing is that this was offered that we do on Friday with a, with a one lecture, but we also have it available online. Twenty-four seven, meaning that if a faculty member misses any of these trainings, most likely there's something that's comparable, that's on the vision resource section. So if they wanted to dictate at any time at any point during the course of the year.
Okay, so for each one of these, there's multiple opportunities for faculty and staff to engage in these activities.
Yeah, these are just exclusive to Compton College.
Right, okay.
But we have them at the state level, because we have some chat as well.
Okay.
They might have a different title, because these are things that I've curated for the campus, but we do have things that are comparable on the vision resource.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking that is because now when you go into. Um, the supporting student success on slide number eight. The large, you know, it's an exceptional where I learned a lot, right? But then now, when you go to. When you look at the number. I guess like the eights that are on slide number seven, those are the number of respondents, right?
For the, for, okay, so.
So the eight, the nine, the.
Okay.
On slide number eight, on slide number eight.
On slide number eight.
Where it's. Oh no, I'm sorry, slide number seven.
Yeah, so on that particular slide, in order to engage with the employees. I decided to not just offer a workshop or a survey at each specific workshop, but I did it the end of the semester, let me know when workshops stood out to you. So that's what you're looking at, this data is what workshops stood out to these individuals, so in their responses. Uh, let's say nine people wanted me to know that they really enjoyed fostering equity and inclusion, right? But that doesn't mean that that's the only workshop they went to, most people went to multiple workshops, but the way that I did the survey only allowed them to respond to one.
Right, so I'm just saying, so to be fair.
Yes.
Because I know that a lot of work went into it, but just looking at it at a, you know, just, just in the broad view. It looks like we're saying that, yes, um, student success was really impactful to me. But when you look at the number, when you look at the number here, when you look at something specifically that's really related to students, something hands-on with students. Those respondents are very low.
I see, so also, I, I, so next time maybe for the spring, like you're saying, I will. Kinda change that, that question, but also I wanna give light to every single workshop. It's very important that we understand that student success is every single thing, so that's one thing that I try to point with the learning culture at Compton. It's not just about pedagogy, it's how those students feel when they touch on, on this campus, like their first step that they take. And so every single workshop is curated to make sure that it's about student success from the beginning to the end, even if it's not in the title.
Right, so now, if it gets so difficult, let's just say if, um, out of the. Number of activity, or you talked about, let's just say out of forty-five, if say fifty percent of those are related to student success. So now you break it down and say, the majority of the staff and faculty spent X number of times, activities, respondents. Because now they spent in a higher, a higher percentage, there was a higher focus on those activities that are related to student success. Because the way I'm seeing it, if you just, if I just base it, just on respondents, the ones that are hands-on with students. Like that, you know, the hands-on where they're really engaging, engaging with students, those are the ones that have the lowest respondents. Right, and I'm seeing like the seven and eight, right, the allyship, even where you're talking about the allyship training, supporting veterans. Again, with the, with the student success and integration, there was only several respondents to that. So I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm bringing this up, and I'm saying because I know that with some of the other presentations and some of the other. Um, with our student success models, I know that there's other, um, there's a lot of other work that's being put in there. But I just want it to be pulled out into the data, to be fair to, you know, to the work that's being done.
But, but I, I think it's. Yeah, I, I think it's, I think you're asking a question that's bigger outside the scope of this, because I think it's looking at. How do you make sort of professional development activities to outcomes, trying to see what the potential impact would be? And I think it's a little bit larger because of the work we're doing conference twenty thirty-five, and our whole, we're gonna be within the next ten years. So, but I do, I think I see what you're looking at, you're trying to say, okay, you want to know who's participating. Two, you wanna look at the professional development activities, can you link next to the outcomes, right?
Yes.
And I think what the first step of this would actually be, is for Dr. Humphrey to start looking at success retention of what's happening, right? And then linking that to based off how many workshops he participated, and what was the most common workshop, was those individuals participating. And then to get a sense of that, and then I think, I can do that, then maybe look a little bit deeper into that data, but I do think it's difficult. For us to be able to say, because with this one workshop. Then that's the reason why these students were successful or were not successful. There's so many different disturbing other factors that can be associated with student success, and that's why I say it's gonna be a severe question. Because a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about twenty thirty-five, and our issues were set goals, and we're talking about the breakdown of the issues set goals. Uh, segregated by race and gender, then we were also talking about, we wanna see that by program. And so on the agenda night, we're working with Dan White in regards to that data and how we're gonna present that in the future as we move forward. So I think this is a bigger question around professional development, and how do we link that to outcomes and success? But be able to isolate that within the data, and I'm not saying we can't none, right, I think that's a difficult question to ask.
I'm just saying, if there's a way. And, and I'm just asking to, you know, like, let's be fair to the work, you know, how does do a fair measurement? Of the work and the energy that's being put into the activities, right, and the faculty and staff participating in those. I'm just, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with it, I'm just saying, if you look at some of the things specifically, like. Hands-on, below the surface, because, for example, like Title Twenty-Nine is broad. There's legal implications and stuff associated with that, right, so of course everybody's gonna go to that one. But some of the other things, hands-on, specifically, if you look at some, to me, some of these activities. That are directly related and associated with students, they have the least number of respondents. That's the, I'm just asking to put another element in there, so we can be true to the work that's being done, that's all.
And I'm not disagreeing with that, what I'm saying is that, we start looking at the data we got around best development, it goes right back to, in a day. The financial impact that we have, our investment in a professional development, is that leading to improved outcome for students.
Yes.
I didn't think that's the question, right?
Yes.
And so we're talking about how to present that and how we move forward.
Okay.
We understand your request.
Okay, thank you, and then just one other thing to look like the best practices, if it's something that could be done.
Um, with like the next, maybe like next semester, we have like the best practices, and I think this is like the slide number thirteen. Where you talk about the best practices for LGTP, LGTP, LGTP two I A plus students. If we could have like a best practice for, um, you know, like the, like what we're talking about before, like in different populations. Adult learners, right, parents, you know, students that have children, foster some type of, because like those, there's a different, um, you know, a different. I wanna say like, best practices that's needed for quite a few of them, is there something that was on the list?
No, I just wanna go back to one thing regarding professional development, we do a needs assessment with our employees. We also work with Achievement Dream, regards to our data and looking at professional development, create a schedule of all the individual development activities. I would say you could provide a lot of different professional development for all the different groups that we serve or are getting. Um, I don't know if the terminology should be best practice serving different groups, I won't go into that, but we provide a ton, right?
Yeah.
And I would say that, well, we can go to spring, is share with the board the potential schedule of professional development activities that are scheduled for next year. That are linked to Compton twenty thirty-five, but it's also kind of based off of this, the needs assessment.
Yeah.
And what activities we're looking at, providing for our workforce.
Okay.
But we, but we've been doing a lot with all the different groups.
If you feel that it's better to add to that from like last time, you know, I, I mean, I think that'd be great as well, it'd be, I think it's a great call out.
So, well, we will, we will share with you the board the professional development schedule for the next year.
Thank you. No, than that, thank you, Ms. Pilar.
Dr. Little.
Thank you so much, Dr. Humphrey, for the presentation, kind of building on, on the previous question, in that PD is optional.
Yes.
That, am I hearing you correctly?
Yes.
Uh, so even the ideas, as it's organized to twenty thirty-five, it's still going to be limited based upon. People volunteering and participating, right? So, understanding the percentage of participation is great, but as you said earlier. These skill sets are for people to operationalize, this knowledge, so if we have, are we assuming? That if thirty percent are participating, that the other seventy percent are. Equipped to do this work? Or are we operating it with the understanding that it's essential? For student success and to create an effective education environment? And where else are we, I guess my question is, where else are we assessing? People's skill sets and abilities to do this work?
People's skill sets and abilities to do this work, if we determine that it's essential?
So I would say that through the evaluation process is one method to do that. I think in, uh, and I don't want to get too much into the negotiations as next to, uh, Barbie. But I think one of the things that we're looking at regards to the mandatory flex credit. Is looking at which workshops are essential, that people should, that should be considered mandatory. And working through that conversation of what that might look like, because some of the workshops, they were often should be mandatory, not only to faculty, but also staff, but also managers as well. And what that, and what is that the plan? And then how do we get to that goal, something that's essential, rest of the other that we know that's important? For all employees, ensure that it's mandatory, everyone receives that.
And I think if you're offering, you know, and these are key resources that are being allocated, right? Just your time in and of itself, but let around the development and the planning of it. And we should see what that return on this investment is. I mean, each person, obviously, it's of value, but, but holistically. And then tying it into the accomplishment of our mission. Most definitely, I would like to see some future follow-up about. Not only the percentages, but where are we seeing this specifically operationalized? Because to me, that also reveal gaps where it's not being operationalized, and that's problematic.
First, please.
Yes, I, I agree. Uh, my, my concern was that it's not a mandatory thing. We need more classified, more. Um, you know, professionalism around campus, you know, wholesomely, you know, uh, I encountered some issues with some. Um, faculty members as well, and it's all about customer service, it's all about hall of service and our students. And if some people are not showing up to some of these workshops or these P Ds, how do we know what their. You know, their true, you know, their true intention is sometimes you just need to check up on people, you know, and I, I would like this, um, for the survey to be a little bit more like, um. Efficient as far as like some more students doing more service to see how they feel about student success, um, honestly. Um, but yes, I definitely agree that I would like to see this to be mandatory for each workshop. Not like, not all of them, but at least like one or two.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Hump. Hey, I, I think that's the part of the question.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Moving on to item thirteen, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Thomas. Do trustees have any items they want, um, discussed? Trustee Thomas?
Um, yes, uh, the graduation of highlands and ingredients. Um.
What, what item is that?
Oh, I do a close action, I don't see no two. Um, so my question was, um.
What, we're, we're gonna ask everyone, so we could go in the order, sorry about that. Trustee Lopez. Doctor Little.
Um, yes, thirteen oh four.
Trustee Doppelmann?
Um, yes, thirteen eleven. Um, thirteen twelve. Um. Thirteen thirteen. Um, thirteen fourteen. And I believe it's, um. I think, um, thirteen fifteen.
Um, what was the last one?
Thirteen fifteen, eleven fifteen, that's five. That's the retention, okay, so it's first that one, but that was like the financial ones, you guys thirteen, thirteen.
Are there any more?
That's it.
Trustee Calvin?
No.
Um, thirteen point zero two, thirteen point two.
That's how it is.
Yes, so for, um, for the graduation, um. For the graduation ceremony, I wanted to know what can we look forward to this year for?
Uh, the item regards to the requirements for the reasons, if it's, I'm driving to graduation ceremony, we, we don't have an update on that right now. But the committee's certainly playing.
Okay, I did see that, um, the, that scholarship did, uh, so I did see there, there's some right now. My question was that, um, some students who graduated already, they said that they were not able to receive their scholarship before they were. Graduating due to it only being, um, implemented for current students.
Um, so my recommendation is that in your report out. Because this item is related to the, the graduation requirements for the increases, the board policy. I think regardless of the scholarship question, if you can provide that, that good report, it's about that. This is not connected to this item, I don't have a.
That is for thirteen point zero two.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
The next one, thirteen point zero four.
Uh, zero point four, yes, uh, so for the issues that we, I want to make sure that it's. So for last year's incidents about the police department, you know, it's very. Well, what I was going to speak on was the last year's incident that we had with, um, us being at the ceremony and the incident that happened on campus. I wanted to know, is there any updates on how we're going to be keeping the campus safe? Are, you know, were there any, um, more updates on, um, the emergency, uh, policies for, for the buildings?
No, I, that, that is separate from this item, and we can follow back up. I, but regards to this item, thirteen point zero four, uh, the, the, the bill, uh, thirteen point zero four, bill, it's equal. Four eight one requires community colleges to report, uh, report inventory of military equipment. This is a duty item that you should report to the board trustees, and this is something we have to do. And this is just sharing out what military equipment is included in it.
I actually had a question about this, but I was just wondering, do you have a report of these? If there are anywhere where I have a license, particularly, if this particular equipment is used in any incident?
I don't recall, but I can ask, can we still afford that in regards to the last couple of years moving at this, we go forward as a body of that.
Moving on to item thirteen, um, point eleven, trustee Doppelmann?
Um, yes, uh, for thirteen eleven, Dr. Curry, um. Is there, um. Is there any other services, um, outside of, um, the AI, um, the AI chat, um, the AI chat, sorry, the AI chat? Is there any other, um, features or, I mean, you know, that you, or that you're aware of?
So included in the contract, which is on the first page, it talks about the online professional video service. It also includes a chatbot, and it also includes, um, some, some general information for the video, the places Spanish. And this is a three-year agreement, uh, and it's about fifteen thousand the first year, about the second year. Uh, and then big two thousand, it's, it's like three years, and it includes amounts fifty thousand five hundred. But it includes the online professional video service, it also includes chat.
Okay, so my, so, so my question, and my concern with this is, um. Because we, you know, with it, like with the challenges with financial aid. Um, students applying for financial aid has, it's been down with the revamp as well, and, and it's very complex. So my concern is going with a, you know, with a chatbot versus, um, you know, the human element and the human. You know, interaction with serving the students.
I don't feel that this contract eliminates the human version, but at the same time, I think you have to be mindful. That we can't ask students questions after hours, and students might have questions after hours, they, they'll be invited to chatbot. I think as we move forward, uh, with the professional department's team getting information about data, I mean, people are taking advantage of it. And then we monitor it over the next year, uh, as we realize this part of it. And we can make sure they provide quarterly reports about all this, regards to what's happening, regards to chatbots, we take them in. I will take it to be set up, things like, of that nature, and we monitor.
Okay, and then what about the, um. In addition to some of the, um, the call center and, and, and I'm just thinking like our state, you know, our state. Is, you know, is unique, and we're presently providing, there's other names that those services can be utilized as well, so.
So we, we actually closed our call center, which I, I shared last fall. And we're, uh, we're moving with the director in regards to follow-up students and how we directly communicate with them. Uh, but I think, you know, this is something that brought forth by the professional department, and I think we monitored it, and I, I, I understand she has concerns. And we asked for updates about how it's going, and then we monitored it, and we're not getting the outcomes that we're looking for. And there, there's able to look through the term basis, uh, see by what term they had later date. But I would like to give this opportunity to see how this goes, uh, with our chatbots and see how this is taken advantage of.
And then just clarification on the call center, just, um, uh, just to clarify what I meant by, um, the call center. I was, um, speak, what I had in mind was the CSAT call center.
Okay, sure.
Because like with our, you know, on our state, a lot of these, um. A lot of the answers, and it talks about like the routine questions, like some of those, I'm just thinking like some of those. Uh, uh, basic routine questions, those can be, you know, those can be answered by the CSAT call center. You know, they also have a chatbot, they have their robust website, where some of these routine things as it relates to financial aid can be answered, um. You know, with other, uh, resources that are currently available.
And we'll make sure to share that with the staff, we can also get the data and to give some more information, share that, and I would ask for some quarterly updates.
Okay, and then is there, um, with programming? I know it has an option to kind of put some of the stuff in there, um, for Spanish, but. Do we have the option to kind of, you know, kind of program or put some of the data elements that's specific? Related to our state, and I'm thinking not just with fast, but I'm also, um, thinking to be able to answer some of those questions that might come up with Kate as well.
I don't know, but I can ask them the fourth question to the chatbot, ask them now, and get more information from that too.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick question on this. It says it's customizable, that was going to be my question anyway about. Not replicating what's on the paper, but also specific to Compton College, and so in the, well, well, of course. That's what I'm saying, it's in the state of California, so I'm just saying, but also the onages being state, is ways in which we can. You know, identify common questions that our students may have, and because it's customizable. Both answer those questions, but also double refer, so giving them the link to CSAT where they may have more involved information. And using our customizable content for things specific to us, that can help our students. And then I think it said in your N T E, that should be forty-six thousand five hundred, is that just an extra zero?
Correct.
Okay. That's it, thank you, I sent it on twelve.
Thirteen two twelve, trustee.
Um, uh, the, uh, the phones, may I ask, is, uh, just clarification, the number that we, um, is it said like twelve in there? Are those the existing, um, blue emergency phones that we have, or is it the?
So this contract was brought before, before to do that, do some modifications to it. But these are the blue phones that are on campus, and I'm realigning responsibilities regards to that, so county police. Will be working with this firm that is all the phones to make sure they're all updated, we have to make this. This is a part of the maintenance agreement for the blue phones to do that.
And what are those calls, though?
They go our police partner.
Two hours, right?
Two hours.
Thirteen, um, point thirteen.
This is like for the, um, thirteen thirteen is the, uh, is for the, um, the gate, this is a. Is this, is this, um, repairing, or is this installing the, um, the marquee?
So actually, this is looking at installing three marquees on the Artesia area. We're working with this firm, we have been able to lease a portion, uh, we do R and P, we're working R and P for February. To very first release, we're able to, uh, lease a part of the campus, uh, on Artesia. For a sign that would go of, of marquee, uh, we're looking at three marquees, which can generate money from advertising, but also waiting for some, to market the advertising of our college. And so this is, uh, I think this is a good move for us to move forward, because the current marquee does not work. And we need to be able to purchase a brandy marquee, but this is actually generating money for us, where we'll be able to lease it to a firm to, to invest the marquee. And then they owe us money for the advertising, but they said.
And then what would the third movie, I'm sorry.
There'd be one on our teeth, there'd be one that's currently entering the campus.
I didn't see it, it just.
No, I, I, then you want to enter the campus, where the football stadium is right now, we're looking at for the marquee there, but also we score a word. For the football stadium, and then one at Artesia Center, they.
Okay, I'm sorry, I do apologize on my behalf. I guess I had it, because I can't see, I guess I, it was so blown up, I only saw the green leaf, so I do apologize.
And the goal, and the goal is to implement something on green, but the problem with green is the lighting. And so we're, the, the goal is that the three marquees will be installed, it will generate funding, but then we also will put something. On the greedy entrance, that we partner contract also advertising, but the revenue generated from that will be able to put something there. Be able to say something about research and study costs, so the problem is the lighting and the houses that are on green. But we have a perfect location for marquees because of the freeway, where we're located at, and work with this firm. Who, we've been talking about this, we're a perfect location that will be able to generate significant amount of money for the discipline. With the money to be utilized for, uh, matters associated with the city's organs.
That's how I was wondering.
Yes, thank you. Will it be digital till they can change?
They will be digital marquees, but we'll be leasing to a term that will have to manage it, and they will have to provide us with funding. And including in our R and P, they will reimburse us for the time that this law firm was working on this project.
In terms of content oversight, which they're going to be managing, do we have any parameters as to what we don't want our school to miss out here?
And that's what's going to be included in our R and P, regards to things that we don't want in our approval as well, um. And I, I understand that we don't.
Climb enough there to hear the dance. I, I will say, uh, uh, the next one, which was the.
Thirteen point fourteen.
Yeah, I would stress that one. Now that I have, I'm sorry, more clarification. Right, exactly.
That, that's separate from thirteen point one three. Thirteen point one four is separate, and that is regards to working with us on the Oliver W. Connor State, as we talked about last month. Regards to the state, uh, there's legal assistance that I need to go to move forward, to not get the, uh, administrative for the statements here, provide an update to the board.
Okay, yes. All right, and that's all I have. That's all I have here.
Without, without any further discussion, can you please have the online vote?
It's, oh, it's item number, regards to Oliver W. Connor State, item three two one zero one.
Yeah. That's a unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item fourteen, action items, fourteen point zero one, board of trustees' vision statement. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by trustee Thomas, Dr. Curry.
So this is just a follow-up to the last, uh, work retreat in regards to the business pa, the business statement. And we're working, we're working with our consultant now that conference of plan, conference twenty thirty-five will be completed. Regards to the five items for the board meeting in September. And so that's the reason why this item is brought forward, because your vision statement expired December thirty-first.
Is there any discussion from the board?
As regarding fourteen oh one, just to clarify, so, working on that is going to be extended until March thirty-first?
Correct.
After the retreat?
Correct, but it would be to try to. Correct, but it would be to try to finalize it. We might finalize it at the retreat, but the goal right now is that I'm working with Dr. Benjamin. She'll be scheduling with Trustee Ramos and I'll try to schedule another meeting with Trustee Ramos and yourself to talk about the mission statement, talk about the vision of the board. And to have a conversation at the board meeting on February third.
To finalize it. Oh, did they, did they ever meet?
They have not, because we had to get the Conference of Master Plan and that vision, because we say well, next to that.
Okay.
And the board has to approve that first before you can move forward with the assignment.
I understand, okay, thank you.
Without any further discussion, uh, can we please have the online vote?
That's unanimous, yes vote.
Moving on to item fourteen point zero two, Compton Community College District Resolution Number. Zero one dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-five D Resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Compton. The College District Entry Election Results in two minutes and certifying the Board of Supervisors of Los Angeles. Counting all proceedings in the November. For general obligation bond uh, election. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Thomas. Is there any discussion from the board? Without any further discussion, can you please have the online vote?
The motion carries.
Moving on to item fourteen point zero three, Compton CCD Resolution Number Zero One Dash Thirteen Dash Twenty Twenty-Five. See of the Board of Trustees of Compton Community College District, approving amended and restated bylaw. For the Compton Community College District Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Locas. Is there any discussion? Please place your online vote.
That's unanimous, yes vote.
Moving on to item fourteen point zero four, Memorandum of Understanding Amendment Between. Compton Community College District and the Major League Baseball Youth Foundation. Formerly known as Major League Baseball Urban Youth Foundation. Do I have a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Thomas. Is there any discussion, Trustee Calvin?
Yes, I would like to know if this can be tabled until next month. The reason I say that, um, as long as I've been here since twenty eighteen, I don't remember how many times this has come up on our agenda. Dr. Curry can remember, I know. Uh, they have never come before us. It's like they just know that we're going to approve, this is just my opinion. They have never come before us, they have never stood up there and talked to us about what they're doing, how they're doing, what's going on. Uh, I know that I think that our baseball team does play on their field, but. Uh, if I'm not mistaken, our um. Our baseball man, half the times, uh, they change their clothes into their uniforms. In the parking lot. And I know that there is a. Is a, over there, since they play over there, I think there is a locker room over there. And then, I don't know if we have a a women's, a girl, young lady softball team. And if we do, uh, do they get to play over there? Um. What's really going over there, uh, over there, and I just, this is just my opinion. I just think that they need to come before this board. And talk to us and let us know what's going on, because every time I turn around, no outside entity allegedly. Can play on that field.
So, 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 I think there's, I don't, I I don't have a problem with asking.
Can I finish?
Oh, I I I think you're good.
No, I'm not.
I'm sorry, neither.
Okay, thank you. And then, um. I've been to the games over there, so I know that our baseball team does play over there, right? I've thrown out the first, I've seen that. You had, uh, two gentlemen come in and talk tonight about outside entities. Kind of figure out how to play up there, what do they have to do? I don't know. Maybe you ladies and gentlemen know, or maybe staff or faculty know, we don't know. I just think that, uh, for two hundred and ten dollars a year, they ought to be able to come and stand before us and talk to us. This is a lease agreement way before we were here, way before we were here. And I just think with all the, yes, they maintain it, all that, I I got that. But I'm not just gonna keep giving you a handout, and you can't come before this board and talk to us about what you supply. Who plays up there and how many of our students or our children. From the community of Compton play on that field. That's my take on it.
Are you, are you done?
Yes, I am.
So, this, this agreement, the amendment was generated by the district because of the Department of Finance as related to student housing. It is not extension of the agreement, all it is, is excluding the housing project from the lease of the premises. Of their agreement. I'm more than willing to talk to Lady Baseball for asking for report for them to come forward. But it's not amending their agreement to extend it. We asked for this to be done if because the Department of Finance and the Chancellor's Office asked for this as relates to the loan program. And they're the ones who generate this conversation. So it's not that they're, Lady Baseball asked for this to be brought forward. We asked for this to be brought forward on behalf of the Chancellor's Office and the Department of Finance. Because of the loan program for student housing, disclude our student housing project from the premises of the district.
I know, I read it.
And I don't have a problem asking them for information, if you, the board would like for them to come forward, provide a presentation of what's happening, I can follow back up. But this con, this contract is separate from the services that they provide.
I didn't say I would vote on it, I just wanted to speak my mind about it. I I I, I read the whole thing, I understand what it's about, but I I'm not giving them a pass on anything. I understand it's about us too now, so I'm saying yes to that, but I'm saying no to them. They need to come before us, they don't get a pass with me anymore. I'm just saying. If they are so interested in our community and our students and our children, then no matter when it's up here on this agenda. They need to come before us and and talk to this board and to the community. So. But I will vote on.
Is there any?
Yes, just to, um, ju- just again, um, with our upcoming groundbreaking with housing again. Uh, this does not interfere with the, with the timeline or the scheduling for that development or. Construction project at all, correct?
It doesn't right now, but the Department of Finance and the Chancellor's Office have a loan program. Where we're, we have to follow through and provide them with the documentation that they have requested. I brought this forward in November of this year and shared with the board that this will be coming. And I worked with Lady Baseball, our legal counsel, and also the Department of Finance to fix this to be agreed for this agreement. So we did amend their agreement, just, it's not extending their contract. All it is saying, one portion of the campus is not included in their agreement.
I wasn't trying to give you a hard time, I just wanted to let you know how.
But we will be asking for updates, uh, and that will never include it, that the board has asked for updates, but we will follow back up. If that's the wish of the board, to ask them for an update regards to programs and services. And I can come back at the next board meeting and ask specifically what type of updates you would like to have.
Okay, because we both think we can be focused.
Can we please have the, well, without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote? Moving on to item fourteen point zero five, Administrative Circuit. Compton CCD Resolution Number Zero One Dash Thirteen Dash Twenty Twenty-Five Ds. Budget transfers and augmentations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Calvin. Is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, please place your online vote.
That's unanimous, yes vote.
Item fourteen point zero six, Facilities Planning and Development Contracts Over One Hundred and Fourteen. Thousand eight hundred, Compton CCD Resolution Number Zero One Dash Thirteen Dash Twenty Twenty-Five D. High Services LLC. Do I have a motion approved?
Oh, second.
It's been moved by Dr. Little, seconded by Trustee Doppelmore. Is there any discussion?
I have a question on, do we have like a guarantee for how long this turf should last?
Yeah, we we had these, uh, I I don't have to refer to these, but we, I can give you information on at least even. We may utilize and we made this agreement as well to for our facility, but we, I can't remember, I'm like, ten, twelve years. When we first installed, I I don't know if the phrase right to provide it to. But this is take a portion of it because our mascot changed to put the college instead of that mascot. And I think it's a fix some other places on the, on the turf. But we can go back to regards to the uh, these, the um, maintenance limits and how important we need.
Okay, the last part of the money for just repair and then to make sure that it doesn't wear differently.
Yeah, we paid over a million dollars to install the entire bill, so this is a portion. So the amount, I don't think it's, I don't think it's considerable, thinking about how much we paid if this thing installed. But I will say, the reason why we move forward is because of mascot change, and so we have to be able to replace that.
Right. I I I completely understand what I'm saying is, it's not a million dollars, it's still a hundred thousand dollars. And what I'm saying is the fact that we choose the different times at this turn, right? Because, so the wear is different from when we first got it installed. I'm saying, and if you're gonna have, it's like patching. Go out a patch, what is the, you know, wear and tear and how will it differ if it's different levels or? Different timeframes, and I think that's reasonable to to uh, be aware of. Or to get some sort of agreement, you know, to ensure that it remains pretty consistent uh, across the board.
We will follow back up.
Further, is there any other discussion? Please place your online vote.
That's unanimous, yes vote.
Item fifteen, Discussion and Action Items, Dr. Curry.
Yeah, so the first item we have regarding discussion, uh, last month, I provided update regards to the Oliver W Connor State. And I did mention that we would have our administrative values here today, know about the state and we're mostly talking about. The two properties and moving forward, because we have to look at development. The board was very clear with me about not selling everything, sorry. Not sell the property, but I wanted to be able to have Val to talk a little bit more about the state. And then the board can ask, ask some questions you may have about it.
Hello everyone, it's Dr. Curry, mentioned I'm the administrator of the estate of Oliver Connor. Um, so currently, we have about three billion dollars in cash assets and there's about six, seven properties, depending how you see it. Um, there is a four unit apartment building and as of the date of death, that value is six hundred twenty-five thousand. And the date of death is April twenty sixteen. Then we have two properties, we have a Mulberry and Tamara unit that they sit on one assessor parcel number. That date of death value is eight hundred forty-five thousand. Uh, Santa Fe is an eleven unit apartment building and and the state owns eighty percent. And twenty percent is owned by a business partner that gets the same plan. Um, that date of death value is one point two seven six million. Um, then we have a property, one two six one six Long Beach that was a previous church. Um, it was, it or it was zoned as a, as a church and we, we did it recently received an appraisal. And that was dated on November eighth, twenty twenty-four, and that's for the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, then we have a house, uh, where the seed of lived valued at three hundred sixty-five thousand. And a property, a commercial office property that is now vacant due to a fire that occurred a couple of years ago. And that is valued at six hundred thousand. Um, we do have a current accounting, there is an accounting that occurs every year with the court. That is currently on calendar and that hearing is gonna be March twentieth. So currently, as of date, four of the uh, properties are under estate management. One had already been transferred over to Compton, um, and that's the one one six one nine Long Beach. It is currently vacant land located on commercial space. And with this fourth accounting, we've also made a request to transfer one of the other properties over to Compton College. Um, and that's the one two six one six, it was currently zoned, uh, it's currently zoned as a house of worship. But it will be able to be converted to a commercial lot, so we are making a petition with the court to also move that over to Compton College. Um, I did a profit and loss statement from January first, twenty twenty-two. To the end of November and give or take approximately ninety thousand a year um, in profits of the estate as a fee. And that's including all attorney's fees, my fees and the administrator. Uh, we have various attorneys doing various things. I have an attorney who's doing the estate administration. There's a personal injury lawsuit, there's currently an appeal, that property that I mentioned where the seed of owns eighty percent. And his, his business partner owns twenty, he was claiming he owned a hundred. We won um, in the trial court and now he appealed it, so now I have hired an appellate attorney to help. Uh, get the property back. So that is uh, just kind of a quick summation in terms of what's going on. Now, I did talk to the school district attorney at the time with Athens and Anderson. Um, and I also just recently, last week, talked to the new firm. And he did confirm the steps, but didn't give any comments yet in terms of what the process would be. For what Compton College can do with the properties. So, the first thing would be that it would declare the properties as a surplus. Um, meaning i- in terms of, if if Compton wanted to go ahead and lease the property and have a developer come in. It would have to first make a declaration of saying that this property is a surplus. Um, after that period of time, it would have to give notice to certain public agencies. Um, to decide if they want to do something with the property at hand. Um, and if there are no members of the public agency, that then we have a public option that would go to the highest bidder. Um, the highest bidder can do whatever they want in terms of that property. So, a question that had come up in discussion, what if a develop, developer came in and wanted to put a liver store? And Compton wouldn't want, exactly, there may be some strong feelings about that, exactly. Um, in that case, uh, the college would have to submit a waiver through the California Community Colleges Chandler's Office. If the waiver is granted, then it would go through a formal R and P process, request or proposal. And at which point in time, the college would be able to consider a variety of different factors, not just necessarily the highest bidder, but, you know. What is valued by, by uh, the college when considering proposals. Um, and so in talking with the uh, the previous law firm, it seems that it's a pretty hands-off process. In that sense, um, they would be able. Um, they would be able to get it moving forward. I've only had one initial discussion with a new firm. Um, and he will be commenting in terms of the notes that I had taken from the previous firm and I will then pass it on to Dr. Curry. I think that covered quick topics. I'll take questions.
Trustee Calvin.
Who's the new attorney? You didn't mention the new attorney. The new attorney, oh, uh.
David.
David Huff, yes, from Ervah, Huff and Henderson.
Uh. Okay.
Just these are.
I'm trying to grapple that one. If we were to get these, uh, you know, properties, what are you planning on doing?
I don't know.
It's good.
Yeah.
Didn't we just approve something tonight?
It's, it's.
Totally different, right?
It's a ratification. Because we had, at the last meeting, we talked about this. I had to work with to get attorney to be able to try to figure it out. So I brought it forward as a ratification. So under the policy, less than fifty thousand, I'm able to bring in a, a, a contractor. That's what I did.
Okay. Tell me about that property again with the new attorney. What, what is that talking about?
Um, what is that, that property address?
Yeah. Uh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, one, one, six, one, nine, Long Beach. It's currently zoned for commercial property and it's vacant, um, because, uh, homeless people burned it down. So, but we have insurance money.
Okay, what does that attorney firm have to do with that property?
Um, since you're the school district attorney, that will be the ones that would be involved. My job is just managing the estate and once it gets transferred over to Compton and then Compton would be talking to the school.
So is the school district property?
No, it's our, it's our, it's our, it's our company, got a district property.
Correct.
When she said school district property, she's talking about our property.
Oh, okay, because you're throwing me off.
Sorry, apologies, yeah.
So can, can, can I tell you?
Yeah, please.
Oh, I got it, but she kept saying school.
I, but I, but I, I'm gonna, I think it's important to talk about this a little bit broadly, how we move forward. So the reason why, what we're trying to figure out is the whole development.
Right.
And as the board was very clear when I brought this forward, is that the board does not want to sell these properties. They want to figure out how to develop that.
Right.
And so we need to work with a firm that's familiar with development of school K fourteen district property to be able to develop those properties. And that's what this firm is able to do. But there's other question that goes into this as well. And I'll just put it out there. We have to look at not only where will the funds go for this, right? I feel that for the district, right now, we look at the waiver organized, that it doesn't make sense for the district at this time to be the fiscal agent of all this. At some point, the district has to figure out and bring forward a recommendation regards to maybe establishing this corporation or the district to manage all these properties.
Got you.
Because that will be able to protect the district as well to assure it's another man as well. So we start looking at the development part of it. That could be brought forward with recommendation for this one, the, these properties can have these two properties. But then also there could be a recommendation brought forward to establish a corporation that manages all this stuff on behalf of the district.
So that we won't be liable for any of those properties right there. If anything goes wrong, they'll be hitting the college for money and, but if we do it that way, okay, I got it. But you were just throwing me off. It's okay, when you kept saying school and I'm going like, I know, we got them, but you said, okay, so I got it.
Yeah.
And I was trying to understand what you said, ninety percent and twenty percent on a piece of that.
Oh, yes. So what, uh, eighty, twenties. So, yes, so one of the properties, um, when the decedent bought the property, he didn't impart. He brought, he brought a business partner over.
Okay.
And so he owns, uh, business partner owns twenty percent.
Okay.
Yes, and the decedent owned eighty, which would mean that Compton would own eighty.
I got.
However, that is, um, the, the business partner is in dispute with that. He said that he owned a hundred percent. And so we won at the trial court and now he appealed it. So I've hired, recently hired appellate counsel, yes, to make sure we stay with a hundred.
I feel better, thank you. Thank you, because I was getting confused.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Here, so just a final question, please, before. You mentioned the properties and the, and the valuation at the time of his death. That, what was that total amount if you, if you were adding one of them?
The total amount, let's see. My guess, I'm gonna do a quick little estimate. Probably like four or five million.
Okay, so when, at the time of the, uh, when we first did brought back to board, we estimated the value at that time of like nine million dollar. Remember, we paid three million dollars off the payment. So based off the number, based off the estimate of what we currently have, was a close to five million dollars plus the two point seven, two point two. That's five, that's seven million dollars with the value, right? We asked the taxes. But when you go to present day, the state is going to be worth more than what we negotiated back then, which is a good thing because we did not sell. So I just want to go back to the nine million was the original. We gave, we settled for three million dollars. And now the state could be worth more than nine million dollars once we get, once we get close to some of the appraisals.
Um, if I can clarify, right? Is that twenty sixteen? Was that, or those, except for the one that was most recently in November?
Correct. Yeah, so these, these are based off of April twenty sixteen. However, um, the one that we did get appraised again, that did drop in value. So it originally did a depth appraisal was six hundred forty five thousand as of November of last year. It's now four hundred fifty thousand, just the condition of the property. Um, it's, it, it, it's complex, it's a complex, it's a complex property.
Okay, I'm done.
And then how far, um, with the establishing, Dr. Curry, when you, you said like what the next steps with the development, establishing a corporation, is that the only option? And what is the timeline when, when, when we get to that part?
I, I think we're, we're beginning to have those discussions now. Because right now, you're talking about developing a property, these are two properties. What is that like? I think those conversations are going to start now. We have to wrap that up. Because we're in the next year and a half, two years, I expect the state to be closed out. And so now we have to start to wrap up the transition of what that looks like. So now's the most conversation we had and that's why the board, we will come to help us figure this out.
I have just one final question. Um, the ninety thousand dollar profit, that's after taxes, isn't it?
Yes, correct. That's including property management fees, various attorney's fees, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, what I will also add is there is, um, the decedent wasn't, didn't necessarily upkeep their properties. Um, and since taking over, there's been a lot of new routes, new et cetera, et cetera. There's still a lot of repairs that need to be done, but we've just been focusing on tenant health and safety and welfare and making sure that everything's clean. Um, the eleven unit apartment building needs new windows. They probably all need all outside paint at some point. Uh, with that eleven unit apartment building, we also need a new electrical system, um, because it's very old. And currently the property management company is working with SoCal Edison and an electrical engineer to get that done. Um, given all the virus situation, that's been something that's very important, but as you know, that kind of goes back and forth. So insurance has been a tricky issue with that one. All the properties are insured, um, but there's just a lot of deferred maintenance.
Right now, the liability comes back to the college.
Right, and those two properties.
So, so that's the eleven.
The, uh, eleven, uh, six, one, nine, Long Beach and, um.
That's an empty property. I'm saying, what about the eleven?
Oh, the eleven unit on the Santa Fe ones?
That's the second one? That's perfect. So we need to get to the court ASAP.
We, we have, but we have to understand what that means and what does it look like for the district. So there's other community college districts that do that, I believe, next week. It's more just to understand what that looks like and also to understand the voting role. Because in the board meeting, the board deals with corporation issues, doing the board these. So I'm trying to understand that. And so my goal within the next two or three months, to come back with a recommendation regards to development of those two properties and also regards to the corporation, uh, if that's recommendation, whether we should hit the board and what that will be.
And I would just recommend that the urgency is just with the risk liability, even after development takes longer.
Correct.
Let's see, uh, this.
My question.
I, I, I think that concludes our questions.
Thank you. That was great information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
So this item we have is the, uh, priority for the legislative parties. Uh, we, we've been working on this until we, we proved it, the, uh, the handbook for, uh, our legislative advocacy. Uh, so our, our goals for legislative parties is our team for the board to review and provide feedback. Uh, we have a couple priorities for state and also for federal. As we go through that for the board, it will respond to and add. One is request additional money to support the general fund, uh, to, to address the pension and also structural costs. Uh, based to increase the funding to get constituents in a funding bundle. Also request funding for scheduled maintenance. As you know, this government budget did not include funding for scheduled maintenance for the district. Also requesting that sixty five million dollars that reduced a strong workforce the last year, being restored in twenty five, twenty six. And also request that states to provide more flexibility with strong workforce programs to fund paying student internships and externships and apprenticeships for students with low income backgrounds, leading to livable wages, livable jobs and growing industry. So LACC, the, uh, community college district is putting forward this recommendation and I feel that we should support that, uh, for our students. Also looking to support, uh, for non-educational and undocumented students. We provide some, uh, supporting policies that support non-educational students and also undocumented students, and also African American, uh, African American students. Enhanced mental health, uh, services advocating for increased funding to spend, to have cell services on campuses. A sustainability initiative, we're looking at solar panels, creating green spaces, including new food trees and vegetable bearing plants, which is included in the conference twenty thirty five. And it's efficiency, energy efficient practicing across the campus. Uh, supporting technology and digital, uh, equity, looking for how to support initiatives that support, uh, uh, data infrastructure. Ensure that students have access to high speed and, and modern technology for online learning and their, at campus and also. Continue to support funding for these student housing. As you know, a part of our goals to build, uh, five hundred events on our campus. And so we'll be able to apply for that in future. Uh, also thanks to, let's say, accountability, recalibrate and form and continue to have those conversations. Also continue to advocate supportive basic needs, asking for increase in funding for student achievement. So we can maybe continue what we do with our students as well as our food programs. And then also asking to champion diverse and underrepresented student, uh, programs, uh, looking at our educated practices and professional development. But then also regulating for funding for our faculty candidate that requires special, in partnership with USC. And then the final was facility support. Requesting money to support, uh, Artesia. As we look at our student master plan in our, our, our campus, Artesia and Inter campus, looking at how can we, uh, really, like, to make it look better. Uh, requesting some funding to need to support that because the interest to the, uh, campus in my A will also have the access to the, uh, health center or the clinic. And looking at what can we do on that interest of our campus right outside of that gate for Compton College. And then the next priority, the federal, is looking at increasing the pedal grant and really advocating for double pedal for low income students. Uh, workforce development and apprenticeships. We, we know that the new administration is going to be really looking at workforce development and apprenticeships. Trying to make sure that we have opportunities to be able to secure some funding for that, especially in healthcare, technology, and community. Uh, so continue to support our DACO students, uh, looking for legislation to support our DACO students. Our research and innovation grants, uh, with the federal government, uh, the National Science Foundation, one, and one, and then also asking for rental support uh, regards to community, uh, projects funding, regards to Artesia, well, of our interest. And the back, last page includes some of our priorities, which are tied to, uh, the other information we provide regards to, regards to our accomplishment.
Trustee Calvin.
Dr. Curry, I'm looking at, you already talked, wait a minute, hold on. You talked about the, uh, community college district that they regarded as an advocacy book and, correct?
Yes.
And then I'm clicking on, uh, the January twenty seventh, uh.
The meeting term.
Did you leave me off on purpose?
No, we're still trying to get those meetings scheduled, which are representatives. So we haven't got the schedules yet. And so we're working on, like, Gibson meeting for that time. We're still trying to get the Laura Richardson meeting scheduled as well. So we're trying, we're still getting meetings scheduled. And once we have the schedule, we have to put your name in those meetings.
I'll just reach that, but I feel slighted, brother. You got the meeting with.
But there's no one to find.
No, hold on. Let me finish what I'm saying. I understand that the meetings have not been made, but Assemblyman Mike Gibson and State Senator Laura Richardson. I see that. All I'm saying is although I see that it is not made, you still can't put my name on the bottom.
Oh, that, that's error. So we would have basically.
You would let me finish my statement. Everybody would know what I'm talking about. Your ten. That's all.
That is a whole section.
That is, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Trustee Doppel.
I'm going back to, um, and this is really at the federal legislative priorities, um, with, and number two with the workforce development and apprenticeship. What is, um, the, the specific, um, challenges for our, um, for our students? One, if, like, how, how, how does this? How does this support, um, forget what it's called, the, um, the prior learning? The credits for prior learning?
That's two different conversations.
It doesn't go into?
No, to the credit for prior learning, which is in the government's budget, provides credit for students based off their work experience, they gotta, we have to figure out that process. But that's separate from the apprenticeships and internships.
The, the, would that be, is that, will I, if I go back up to the state part? Is that, is, would that be, is it listed there and I dismissed it?
We, we're not looking at as a priority, but right now it's a, this, the governor's priority. And we're just trying to understand what that means and what that process means to provide credit for prior learning. And so we're going to support the government. I think we support the government's proposal, but we still have a lot of questions that need to be asked before we can be able to advocate.
Okay, and then on the, um, and then on the federal side, um, what are the, what are some of the challenges as it relates to, um, our students? And are we aligned with? So I'm looking at my notes, I'm sorry. The current, the, the current challenges impacting, um, our district? And are we aligned? Are these pretty much in line or in collaboration with like our LAR partnership?
First of all, LAR does not have legislative priorities to go to.
And if, but isn't this part of our work?
But, but I, I hear you, but what I'm saying is that our party committee, we have meeting on Wednesday. I said that, you know, last week that was pretty bad because they did not have legislative priorities and they not have the ideas that we recommended to them. But the legislative party, we have meeting on Wednesday and discuss that. So we look at LAR and their legislative priorities at this moment, they do not have legislative priorities. I think our goals regards to the areas of focus are in line with the strategic plan that LAR did for, uh, twenty twenty four through twenty twenty seven, which the board accepted months ago. But the healthcare, technology, and green energy is included in that. But regards to legislative priorities, they're not there yet. I think, but we are aligned with that. So our goal regards to the federal party is regards to workforce development, is really trying to work with industry and providing paid opportunities for our students to be able to participate.
Okay, so we are aligned in, in, from what you said, like, LAR, they are.
They're, they don't have legislative priorities at this time. And so I gave them feedback in December regarding legislative priorities and we have a meeting on Wednesday regards to that. But at the end of the day, I think that we are advocating on behalf of Compton County God District. And if LAR gets their stuff together, I think we can have a conversation about that and what their priorities are, but we don't have that information at this time.
Thank you. That's all I have.
But I also would say that I think these priorities, uh, especially number three is in line with the issue that we're, our skills are based. I think number one, regards to pedal grant is a, a big issue for our students. And so we, I think we have a good sense of things that what our students need. And so these priorities, I think, are meeting the needs of our students.
Okay, thank you.
So we will make the change to the meeting schedule. We're trying to make meeting schedule and get that done and then also get the federal meeting scheduled as well. And so we will keep the board updated and we'll make the change, Trustee Calvin, regards to the name being included and that was on the site. And we take full responsibility. Item fifteen point zero three, just want to let the board know, we do have a training scheduled for February third, twenty twenty five with Dr. Helen Benjamin. Uh, she, and her contract was approved today on the board agenda for both trainings. Uh, we got that done. Uh, one thing I want to bring forward is that our EEO. Uh we got that done, um, one thing I wanted to bring forward is that our EEO plan included board training for three hours regarding um. Uh eliminate bias in hiring and employment, and so we're, I'm trying to get some dates for the board, but that would be an in-person training for the board. And I'm hopeful that the board will be open to a date in March, uh probably, I'm looking at maybe on Monday, from five to eight, to be able to provide that training.
Doctor Curry, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So the training is for the board related to what?
In related to the whole hiring process relates to bias, and so including in the EEO plan. Was an activity for the board to understand our hiring process, but also about unbiased hiring.
Can you correlate that to the faculty, going back to our TV conversation of faculty and staff or? You know, but, but faculties specifically who are also getting this parallel training?
Yeah, we, we have to provide it to faculty as well.
And.
For faculty, the third one, uh committee, that's something that we have to have through negotiations, that's a negotiation conversation. Regards to mandatory training of our department of hiring. Well, is the board open to a training on Monday, uh to be able to do that uh sometime in March? I'm open to the board, remember?
In March?
Yeah, what about March third? Throw that out, this board is available for a special board meeting on March third, from five to eight, and we will to look at, you know, presenter for that.
This is going to be in person?
Yes, it's going to be in person.
We have our meeting probably in, right?
It are meeting is scheduled for the seventeenth.
Is there any way to consider, well, we have today three hours. The two to five on the same morning?
Then you said Monday, March the third?
I still have March third as the.
Five, June to eight P M. What do you mean, a motion on that?
I, I need, I need direction, the board is okay with that, we will move forward to begin the planning, and then we bring back, I, I gotta talk to presenter too, but it's March third first. From five to eight, and then I can bring back, at the next board meeting, the change to the board's schedule, and that is as a meeting that is training. I need direction.
I'm okay with that, didn't?
I'm not okay with that, I do.
I, I'm okay with that.
Okay, it, uh, Doctor Little?
I think please go with the majority, I can't answer tonight, like, no, I've got March there, so please go with the party.
And then the next board meeting is February twenty fourth, right?
It's March seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yes.
Okay, so we will move forward and bring forward a, we will certainly put in the schedule for March third, and then we bring forward a change to our board meeting schedule.
And this is EEO training, right?
It is the training for unbiased hiring.
Unbiased hiring, thank you.
Eliminate, sorry, eliminate bias in hiring and important. The next one?
Yes.
The next one is our updated enrollment, uh I mentioned some of this to the board before, so for um, our, we got a new enrollment data today. Um, which, I'm sorry. And the, uh, for spring semester, we're up, sorry, excuse me, one second. For spring semester, we're up compared down to compared to back here at this time. We're up by seventeen percent, and then for winter session, we are up by twenty four percent in legislation as opposed to winter. So enrollment is going very well, the key for us to make sure that we have the, the change to this, that also comes from the fall semester enrollment to spring. And so you have the information in your packet regards to online versus in-person. Uh stimulus, hybrid, asynchronous courses, it's a board as board, and that's included for spring, over the data is at, uh where we're, where we're at, we're best server. Any questions on that, yes?
Item sixteen, grant items, sixteen point zero one administrative services grant, Ballmer Group. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
It's been moved by Doctor Little, seconded by trustee Lopez, is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can I please have the vote?
I'll give a verbal yes. Definitely, and I'm a yes vote.
Moving on to item sixteen point zero two, admin, administrative services grant, our appointed department. Of social services, CalFresh outreach grant, Chico State Enterprises, double word number eight twenty five dash zero 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 eight. Dash S, zero one seven, project code S P sixty five, one one eight zero one, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to, to first second. Make the motion, I'll second, motion to approve?
It's been moved by trustee Doppelmore, seconded by Doctor Little, is there any discussion? And we please have the online vote? Sixteen point zero three, administrative services grant, W N N Foundation grant, grant number C R M. Zero one five six two two eight, do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, moved, second.
It's been moved by Doctor Little, seconded by trustee Doppelmore, is there any discussion? And we please have the online vote?
That's a unanimous yes.
Sixteen point zero four, administrative services grants. Amendment, the county of Los Angeles Department of Public Social Services, out of classroom coordination services. C C C P twenty one zero zero three, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
It's been moved by Doctor Little, seconded by trustee Doppelmore, is there any discussion? And we please have the online vote?
The motion carries.
Moving on to item seventeen, board policies and amendments to figure of regulations, Doctor Kurt?
Yeah, so, uh, we have a couple more policy, you know, this regulation, I know we should be having a schedule of what we're doing for board policies. Uh twelve point zero one, is strategic initiatives, this is tied to the Compton twenty thirty five that the board approved in um, in December. Uh, we also have the updated policy seventeen point zero three, which is the official regulation regards immigration uh important activities. We're going to issue this regulation sometime this week, regards to roles and responsibilities of ICE, where to come on campus. Uh, we have a memo that will go out to the employees, and also to, and also to students as well. Uh, so this initial regulation has relation to that, uh, the one thing we're just waiting, trying to just finish compiling, is the information regards to legal services. That will be available in your resource of the office, and also in official records. This will be a mission regulation that we issue sometime this week, anybody has any questions or any feedback, please let me know.
Proceed, Doppelmore.
Uh, I just, um, thank you, Doctor Curry, uh, for, um. You know, speak, um, providing clarification on that, I just wanted to ask, does this, um, does this policy? Include, say, like, with, um, with, um, some of the online information, some of the data? Um, for our students, and I'm specifically thinking for like financial aid purposes, or is there something separate? That will be coming forward? To protect the students, you know, like their, I, you know, identity, their information?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to answer that question, did I? One is, so, so our eighty five forty are documented to make sure that their information is, is in our system, you know, we have access to that. Uh, this policy has to do, basically, if ICE come on campus, what's the protocol, regards to that? And then how do we port that out to the board and trustees, also how we port that out to the campus community as well? If it also students have for initial information, what were the information available regards to legal services? Uh, regards to financial aid, our financial aid department provides information for undocumented students and eighty five forty students. We also have a partnership with Trilla, was the board approved last month, where they have provided, um, services on our campus, but also virtually to our students as well. So, I don't know that answering your question, but we're, we're providing information out, if there's information that you think? That our students should be aware of, or that are providing public service services, I can make sure the staff has that financial aid, share that with students when they go to the financial aid department.
Yeah, and, 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 and just, well, thank you for that as well, I'm just thinking, with this new cycle coming up. And we're already down with the number of students that are applying for, um, financial aid anyway. Um, how, you know, what reassurance with protecting of that data are we providing for students? And if that's something that's completely separate, I get it and I.
Are you saying protecting of their information?
Their debt, yeah.
Are, are you thinking that some students might, and I'm not saying, well, we're not, I just don't know. Are you, are you thinking that some students might not be applying for aid, because they're afraid of?
Yeah, yes, yes.
And so what, what, what is our financial aid department doing to protect their data, to make sure they're not getting in the wrong hands, so people, and we can, I can follow back up on that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Chair. Mister Preston.
And that includes the, um.
Moving on to item eighteen, information items.
I just wanted to say, we have, you know, normal items for the board to be able to look at, I just wanted to, uh, uh, number eighteen point two two. Which is the bond oversight committee, we will be moving forward with the next week, regards to advertising, we need to put these positions in the building, bond oversight committee. And that includes that patient, I would also spend the time monitoring and follow back up on our board following law, and you may do a really good job on that. Or respond here and balance it to the board's questions and model items. Uh, one thing I do want to share too, item eighteen point zero six, is the update on eighty seven oh five, the six oh five petition for the district. And that includes information. So there's any questions? I remember nineteen, we've been there, items, we're, uh, working on a couple things. One, we have a financial aid presentation, and I will make sure trustee Doppelmore about the financial aid and doctor, and the deal with that question about, uh. The data, and we include it sometimes weighing into the presentation. Uh, we're looking at our, um, audit reports and our bond audit reports, to make sure, see if we're going to have that done for next month. We have information on the budget development, as you know, the governor, uh, released the budget last Friday. We also have update on our five year business management plan, and it also updated Compton twenty twenty, twenty thirty five, the role advancement plan updates, and I think.
Moving on to item twenty four, reports.
Yeah, I have a couple items to share with the board, uh, you know, sending our thoughts and prayers to all that, all those that have been impacted. By the wildfire in my seventh family, we continue to make sure that campus is safe, um, as individuals were aware last Thursday, we posted campus. And we'll let you vote because of the air quality, we'll continue to monitor that every day, uh, as we move forward. On Friday, January seventeenth, at one o'clock P M, we have our Easter instructional unit two, adjacent to the zero. We host a groundbreaking ceremony for the Compton College two housing project. We also have an event, and should we get that information out, hoping for in the week, work with Kostya Diversity and Ice Hills, uh, and also Second Estate. Regards to the Black Achievement Office, they have the kickoff event for the Black Shirley Institutions. They're available Friday, February seventh, from eleven to one o'clock P M, at California State University Ice Hills. Uh, also, Stephen Bradley will be honored at that event. This week, Wednesday, we have our, uh, barbecue breakfast, a celebration at nine o'clock A M. Uh, it's multi-purposeful, hopefully, the board will let me go to attend that event for the barbecue. And I also want to just put a note that the governor released the budget on Friday, January tenth, as I mentioned, we will have more information today before the meeting. Regarding to the budget and our budget development process for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. This was like, what, five months ago, we brought forward a budget for twenty four, twenty five, and we provided updates every single month, and now we're right back in the budget process. And so we will provide the first, uh, update of the budget at the next meeting, that will be my first, thank you.
Student and trustee Tom.
Um, first and foremost, I wanted to, um, acknowledge, um, our new president and our new vice president, evacuation. Our honor to you guys, and happy new year to you all, I'm, I'm sorry for my accent, if I was facing some adversity. And I also wanted to acknowledge, um, thank you, uh, to the board, Doctor P thirty, for the groundbreaking for the housing. Also, the, for the RT history, um, it is back open, um, today was my first time going down RT street, I'm like, wow, this is great, because it's been such an inconvenience. Um, and I'm just, I'm just so grateful that, you know, enrollment is, is going up, you know, and that's all that. And I will be there on Wednesday, I'll listen to you guys in here.
Trustee.
Uh, I will not be there on the fifteenth. I'm so sorry, I would, I will be here for the seventeenth. I will do my best to make, uh. Some, but it's not a guarantee that you will be seeing me at all. At the events, I will try my best, uh, I just have to put it on my calendar and see if my boss approves it. And, and, um. I am just so happy to see everybody, the first year and all that good stuff. And I wanted to say something else, but. I just want to thank the board for their support for me doing my two years as the president of, of the college. I thank you for your encouragement. Your, uh, input. Uh, we don't always agree, but we agree to disagree, and we still get along, and that's what I like about this board. Uh, we're not going to always, but I love each and every one of you. And there's nothing in the world that you could do about it, so don't even try. But on a, you know, the note, I just, I just can't leave this alone. Uh, but I am going to leave it alone, because I'm going to have to process work. But I would say this to students, to all students. Yeah, I'm saying, when you have an issue? With your grades. Grade change. Whatever. There is a policy about grade change. Whether you go for a low score and you go up, or whether you're up and you go down. Students, please, please read that board policy. And don't give up, and don't let anybody defer you, and, and just follow your grievance. Do it the right way, and let's see if the process works, um. There are students that do not do it, there are students that just say, forget it, and they go to another college. I've seen some of these students at other colleges, and I'd say, weren't you at Compton College? And they said, yeah. And some of them tell you the reasons, some of them don't, but I don't make a comment to them. I just ask them, do they follow the process, and a lot of them say, they don't, because it doesn't do any good. That the grade will still stay the same, that they will not change it. But students, if you don't do anything about it, you never know, and you won't be able to talk about it. So I would, uh, say to all the students. Uh, follow the process, do the grievance, and go as far as you can.
Um, happy new year. Um happy new years, um uh congratulations to successful um two years of being president of the board, Trustee Calhoun. Um congratulations to our new uh um E board, as you call, president, vice president, clerk, and secretary Dr. Curry. Um I would just like to again encourage during this time, um you know, all of our students um to apply um for financial aid. Uh now more than ever, we have students and families that um that can really um utilize those, those, those part of those financial resources um that are there and available. And again, thoughts and prayers go out to those uh Californians, self-talers, um affected and impacted by um the wildfires. And again, that's all I have, uh happy new years, everyone. Happy new years to you as well.
Um again, thank you to the administration of Dr. P staff um and to everyone working on behalf of the entire community, holding here. Actually, I want to extend my thoughts and prayers to those families by the flowers and really sending out our broader community encouragement for us to work in unity and to not fall prey to divisive forces. Um would also just like to uplift our community as we are continuing to focus on education, very happy about the numbers. Uh we encourage us to continue to outreach to students and to residents to take full advantage of all of the resources at Compton College, I was in Uber um during the holidays, this young man um was talking, he had attended another college not far from here, and we were just talking about all the resources, and he wasn't aware of of all of the resources that he settled now, he thought about he's gonna be enrolling um in the spring, but I think we all need to be ambassadors for his college, uh for the outcomes that we want. And we can acknowledge the challenges, but please uplift the opportunity. Um and hopefully we can pose the minimum of those costs.
Trustee, vote it.
Um welcome, we send me our thoughts and prayers to everybody that have been encountering uh the fires since last week. Having support to any of our staff and administrative team. We're present for those areas that have been impacted.
I just wanted to reiterate um everything about the fires. Um it's it's affected people I know, and I'm sure most of us know someone affected by it. So that that's keep that in mind, and this I think that's it, I'll 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 see most of you on on Friday.
What time is your own Stacy get?
And that concludes our meeting at.